Thank you for all of those who are joining us this evening. And we're happy that you're here. We had, did send out a text today that we're going to be giving an update on coronavirus. This wasn't called out originally in our agenda, so we, just being as transparent as we can, just wanted to make sure that people were aware. Obviously, we've had some sort of update on coronavirus since March 12th of last year when we closed down schools, so that's not atypical. So, that being said, we're going to start with the superintendent's report, which is, and which will also be where this conversation is. Rob?
Thank you, Board President. Mark, with board members. In the interest of time, we're going to head right into the COVID-19 update, if that is okay with the board. We do have several of our members from our, our health partners that do have another, another meeting at seven o'clock, so we want to be mindful of that time. So at this point, we will, Randy, or Communications Team, if you could pull up the, the deck, and then we will begin by turning it over to Heather and, and Dr. Urbina, once we pull that up. Heather, if it's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to you, and, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. Yes, that's totally fine. Let me get this pulled up here. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and update folks on where things stand currently in Boulder County, updated as of 2:00 PM yesterday. This graph is from the state dial, actually, today, so it's more up to date. Right now, currently in Boulder County, our two-week cumulative incidence is up at 458.8, which puts that metric into stay-at-home level, or Level Red. Our two-week average positivity rate in Boulder County is at 7.1%, putting us in the yellow. And as far as declining our stable hospitalizations in Boulder County, we are still in Level Green on that piece. This is a look at how things are looking across the Denver Metro region. As you all know, we're seeing a massive increase in cases across the state. Boulder County is this little red line here, and Broomfield County is this lighter, tealish color. As you can see, though, we're, we are seeing a climb across all of our Denver Metro region This slide should look pretty familiar to folks. This is our number of Boulder County residents and CU-affiliated residents newly reported as testing positive. This is from late August through yesterday. These are folks who are positive or considered probable. The lighter blue is CU-affiliated cases. You'll see our earlier September surge there, and now we're seeing our more widespread community cases. Most recently, about 15% of our cases are CU-affiliated, but really, we're seeing those in the broader community at this point in time. This is our trend in two-week incidence of new COVID-19 cases by age group. As you can see toward the right-hand side of the slide, this is zoomed in so that you can see what's happening a little bit closer up. And this is rate per 100,000. All of our age categories are seeing an increase. Right now, the, the steepest increases, as far as more than doubling, are happening in our 0- to 9 age range, our 75-plus age range, and our 18- to 22. So those are the highest right now. This is a slide that talks through what we're seeing as far as cases in the 0- to 4, 5- to 9, 10- to 14, and 15- to 17 age range, which is most of our school-age population. So you can see what's happened in the last two weeks as of 11/8, and what's happened in the previous. We've seen increases in number of cases among all our school-aged age groups comparing, when we compare the most recent two weeks to the previous two weeks. In particular, we've seen over a tripling among our 0- to 4-year-olds, 5- to 9-year-olds. So that's definitely something that we're watching. This is taking a look at the cases that are reported either positive or probable, probable by municipality. And so you'll see in the most recent data that it's a fairly close even split between Boulder City and Longmont. We have 376 cases in Boulder City and 340 in Longmont, with, in the past seven days, about 41% of our new cases have resided in the city of Boulder, and 36 have been, 36% have been in Longmont. So still make up the larger majority of our cases. This piece right here is really alarming for us, and is also a trend that we're seeing beyond Boulder County, is our hospitalization rates. You can see, well, you maybe can't see, the first date there is April, where it's starting at the graph through today. As of right now, we have 86 people currently hospitalized in Boulder County for confirmed COVID-19. That's the highest number of hospitalizations we've had throughout this pandemic. So it's definitely something that is a concern again for us and for the state. So those are the main pieces of data that I wanted to share this evening. We see that things are not trending in the direction that we would like to see them in public health. I think Helene is gonna share a bit more about Broomfield specifically, and then I think we, we'd like to share just some of the pieces that we need our community to start engaging in more of, or continue engaging in, to slow down the spread. Helene, I don't know if you're ready to present.
Yep. Can I, this is Helene Lambert, can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm Helene from Broomfield Public Health, and thanks for having us this evening. Similar to Heather, as she shared, we, we are seeing some alarming numbers, and so I will share my screen in just a second, so hopefully. So, as, as we've talked about, we've all shifted to Level Orange, which has been called Level 3 before, and you can find these updates that I'll be going over on our website, this link is an active link here at broomfieldcovid19.org. So, we are also seeing that ongoing alarming trend of our average cases, and looking at a three-day or a seven-day moving average, it really just gives a perspective of how much of an increase we've seen in this last month, month and a half, and it's been a constant uptick where we haven't, in the past where we've been able to associate it maybe with an associated outbreak or a particular age group, it's definitely staying at these higher levels of cases, case incidence. Our, and this next slide here just showing in terms of when we think about the levels of the dial that the state is using, our numbers are actually in the red level, which is Level 4. And so that's part of why all the health departments are working really carefully with all our community partners and school partners to really get out the message of staying at home, limiting contact, because this, this case of incident has just continued to creep up over the last several weeks and through the month of October, and now into November. Our positivity rate has also gone up to, if you, if you look at when we started having much more access to testing throughout the whole community, so that's where we're using the June-through-current-day perspective, when we're doing lots more testing than we were previously able to do in the beginning of the COVID-19 in the spring, you can see that our positivity rate are, just checked, actually, right, right now it's up again. So every day it's gone up, and then so 8.2 is our positivity rate for Broomfield County, which is in the level yellow in terms of the level, but it's an alarming number when we see it go over 5% that we really know that that's a struggle in terms of it, there's much more community-wide transmission happening. We look at the different age groups and, and in terms of just kind of categorizing, you know, where we keep seeing an uptick, as I ever mentioned, we've, we've seen cases go up across the board, but this is just, you know, it's flagging, the orange line is flagging the 5- to 17-year-old in terms of just awareness of, of that uptick that we've seen in, in terms of when students have returned, and, and what else may be going on in the community in terms of increased exposure. There's a lot of text on here, but these slides can definitely be shared with others to read at another time, but we, as we've shared, see an alarming increase in our COVID cases, our case incidence has, has every day gone up in terms of 474, we're actually at 500 per 100,000 today, and as I just shared, I just updated our positivity rate to 8.2. We know that household transmission continues to be one of the biggest factors, and that's why it's so critical to make sure if someone's sick, to, you know, seek out testing and immediately start wearing a mask, things to isolate from their household members to try to reduce that household transmission. We are hearing a lot more of our case investigations sharing that they actually have a, a good sense of who actually might have exposed them, in terms of it might have been a family member or a friend that they can recall either was sick or found out that they were COVID-positive. There's a lot of that small gatherings, events, kind of small gatherings and household transmission that's happening. Our cases have also reported some work exposures, other events like birthdays and other, you know, multi-household activities together, as well as sports and, and club activities being potential exposures. I think it's always important to just highlight the symptoms, because I think some people don't always put, connect the dots together in terms of what they might start having as symptoms. The number-one thing that we heard from every single case in our last, you know, week or two of cases was a headache, and some people just started with a headache. And a lot, another, the second one we hear is fatigue, a lot, lot of comments about fatigue. So it's not a fever, and, and we just constantly are trying to get out that message of that it's often mild symptoms, and sometimes there's GI components, it's sometimes diarrhea. More, more feedback this time around with cases sharing kind of fuzzy thinking or brain fog, just feeling kind of more confused, some more reports of dizziness, as well as a mix of cold-like symptoms, which can be runny nose, congestion. And we know, as we all are feeling that COVID fatigue, in terms of just, we all would love it to be back to normal, we don't want to have to worry about stay-at-home concerns and orders, and, and so that, that's reflected in our case interviews as well, and that people don't always want to do the interview, the full interview, they might not give the correct information or correct address. And we're also recently more running into individuals who are part of quarantine, that have been in part of multiple quarantines, so there's that fatigue, quarantine fatigue happening as well, too. Again, extra information in here I'll just highlight, but, you know, what do we know? What are we keeping an eye on? We, we are carefully monitoring how many more cases we do see in, in all school-age groups and childcare groups. We know that most of the research is, is showing that there's a lower transmission with younger kids, but that's something we're gonna continue to monitor and see how it goes. We know that schools have done an immense amount of work to keep students and staff safe, and there is an immense amount of value of having students have that access, but we also recognize how high the community transmission rate is right now in Colorado, and, and how we do also need to take some pretty strong actions to help reduce the spread. Other considerations, just to share, are just, you know, we recognize and, and work with our school partners on how it is a disruption of schools, and, and all the logistics of staffing, and how, how to cover classes, how to make sure students and staff are properly screened, health screening. There is a significant impact on the local public health agencies. We work very closely with Boulder County Public Health and our other partners, and we are, we are also struggling with cases and contacting cases and investigations and businesses and different scenarios that are going on. And the importance of the spread, controlling the spread in the community, we, you know, I know our overall goal is always to try to keep schools open and keep students and staff safe, so we're, we're all collaborating together, and we're also trying to advocate for more access to testing to quickly help identify possibly asymptomatic, as well as, you know, or at least symptomatic individuals, to get them quickly isolated and, and help reduce the spread. These are just our links of our website, broomfield.org/covid, and lots of extra information on just reversing the trend and other information on our site. Thank you all, and we're happy to help answer questions.
At this point, I think that we're gonna have our staff just go through the rest of this presentation, if that's okay, Heather, Helene, and Dr. Urbina, and then I'm sure that our board will probably have questions once we've gone through this piece. So I believe, I believe Stephanie Farren is going to be presenting next, if, if, if I am correct on that, Randy, is that right?
Yep. Thanks, Dr. Anderson, I'm here, if you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So, you know, really what I want to say mirrors exactly what Heather and Helene have said up to now. You know, throughout September and October, the number of cases that our COVID team investigated were rising, but, but minimally, and, you know, in a way that we were able to really keep on top of them. A lot of those cases also involved really tracking symptomatic students or staff that required a negative test before they could return, and in some instances resulted in the quarantine while we waited for those test results. However, the past two weeks, we have seen just a significant increase in the number of cases that our team is needing to investigate, and more and more times initiate quarantines. We are reviewing now upwards of 50 cases of day, a day. Not all of those result in quarantines, but many times those are cases that we need to continue to follow up on over a few days or get more information on. And as you know, yesterday, we had to quarantine over 400 people. Another difference that we're seeing really over the last couple of weeks, which again is highlighted by the information that Helene and Heather gave, is that the majority of the cases that we are seeing now in schools involve positive individuals and not just symptomatic folks that we're following. You know, in addition, as public health acknowledge, they're really beginning to reach their capacity to follow up with the cases that they're receiving in a timely manner, and that situation cascades down into our schools. People that might have typically been notified that they were a contact and that they should be quarantining are not getting that information in as quick of a manner as they did, especially when we have folks who aren't cooperating sometimes. And then that prevents them from actually knowing they shouldn't come to school or to work, and then sometimes when they come and they don't realize that they've been exposed, then they get sick and trigger quarantine for us. So that's some of the community impact that we've been seeing. Another impact that is really going to begin to cause more and more quarantines for us is the more restrictive return-to-school requirements that accompany our move to the Level Orange. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. And so, under Level Yellow, which was Safer at Home Level 2, if a critical, if somebody had a major symptom or a minor symptom that did not resolve within the timeframe, all they needed to return was a negative COVID test. Under Safer at Home Level Orange, because of the recognition that, you know, there is more transmission in the community, there is an increased restriction that is put in place, and that is needing a negative COVID test and an alternative diagnosis. So those things need to come together before we can release somebody back into school or before we, you know, can stop, stop a quarantine from happening. Those two things really will significantly impact us, and those really rent into effect on Monday, so we haven't even seen the full, you know, outcome of what that new restriction would be. I do want to take just a moment at this point, if I can, to recognize all of the staff, the nurses and the health room staff throughout the district. They have been working literally nonstop to keep track of students in schools, to follow up and gather information, and they often are the ones who have to tell families that they can't bring their kiddos back to school without a test, and now without an alternative diagnosis. That takes time and, and money for our families, and oftentimes, they have to deliver that unfortunate information. And then I also want to acknowledge the staff at Boulder and Broomfield Counties. Their public health staff has been incredibly supportive and professional, and has been an amazing support to us. This is an, an event unlike anything we've ever experienced, and I think we really need to make sure that we give our unending appreciation to those folks who have been keeping our community and, and really helping to keep our schools open and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, board members, as we think about the current challenges that you've heard from our health officials and as well as our staff, the skyrocketing cases that we're seeing, which has doubled and tripled the rates over the past two weeks, and those rates continue to climb, not just here in Boulder County, but those areas surrounding us, is, is resulting in stretched and potentially inconsistent contact tracing in case investigation, right? So as we were thinking about how we were operating previously prior to heading into Safer at Home Orange, we were able to keep up and, and keep track of those things and have a better quality control in regards to those that we know had been exposed to proactively quarantine to keep case rates down. As, as local health systems become overwhelmed, and it's because as our team becomes overwhelmed, we aren't able to consistently guarantee that level of contact tracing, that was a big proponent of our, one of our biggest mitigation strategies that we've been using. The, the Safer at Home Orange quarantining criteria is resulting in the inability for us to continue to try to close on a school-by-school basis. As Stephanie is sharing with you, 50 to 70 cases a day we're trying to track down and figure out, you know, again, if somebody has symptoms, if a student or staff member has symptoms, right, they not only have to get a negative test, but they also have to get an alternative diagnosis from a doctor, right? And, and what we're hearing throughout our community is those, those appointments are becoming harder and harder to be able to achieve, as we think about how all of this is starting to begin to really compound. And then, as we think about the situation that we have, and the interdependency as a community that all of our school districts have here in the Denver Metro, it compounds the issues in regards to staffing. Several of our large districts where lots of our employees live, those, these districts have decided to go remote. It creates childcare issues, which is going to create teachers having to, to, it's teachers and staff having to make accommodations for that, potentially having to take leave to take care of those things, and with our razor-thin margins around staffing, that certainly impacts us as well. So, next slide. So, board members, I, I need to let you know, and I need to let our community know, that I do not make these recommendations lightly. This is quite frankly agonizing, as we think about the things, the, what we, what we provide for our kids and the importance of in-person learning, we feel that we're at a place now that we are just, just overwhelmed, and that we need to, to, to take action and take action quickly. So we are recommending that all students in grades pre-K through 12 start on home learning, starting next Tuesday, November 17th. That we will try to bring kids back when we come back from winter break. This is a similar pattern that you're seeing many other districts who are facing these challenges take as well. You know, if, if, if the trends and patterns hold true to what we've seen with this virus, as these cases grow, as we hit a holiday or as we hit a break, that, that tends to compound the cases that we're dealing with. And we've seen that over Labor Day, we're starting to see that over Halloween. We don't have any information that would lead us to believe that that's not going to happen over Thanksgiving, and that we will look to the best of our ability to return students with intensive needs and, and review case rates after Thanksgiving to determine if it's safe to begin to bring back those limited groups. We know that our students with intensive needs need to learn in person, we understand that, but we also want to be sensitive to the case rates in our community, that if the trend holds and continues, that will continue to grow exponentially, as we've seen over the past two weeks, and as we've seen all of the other districts that have gone, or, or counties that have gone into Safer at Home Orange. To my knowledge, there isn't a county that's been able to mitigate that to get out of Orange, right? And that, when you look at the seven-day case rates that, that Heather shared, they're just continuing to grow and grow and grow. Unlike when we had the spike in cases at CU earlier in the year, where they grew, there was mitigation strategies, and you started to see that come down, and I think that, you know, I just commend Boulder County Public Health for, for, and the CU, City of Boulder, working together to create those mitigating strategies. I do not see a similar path forward at this point for us with the challenge we're facing. So those, this is what we're recommending at this point, moving forward. Again, moving students, all students in, in grades pre-K through 12 to home learning, starting next Tuesday, staying in home learning until January 5th, and then, you know, continuing to monitor case rates, and then beginning to look at how we can bring back our students with intensive needs first, and starting to review those case rates after Thanksgiving, working with staff to determine if we'll be able to, to be able to, to create an environment where we mitigate the risks to be able to bring people back in. So, at this point, I would ask Dr. Urbina if he had any other comments or questions, and then we'd open the, open the floor up to the board members for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I just wanted to say that I, I think these are very important discussions. We're seeing a significant increase in our rates, and, and we're just talking, we shouldn't just be talking about numbers, we should be talking about people. This, this disease is severely affecting all populations, all age groups. When we talk about either hospitalizations or deaths in our communities, these are real people. And, and, and when you're hospitalized, that has a significant impact on you as well as your family. So we're seeing increases in, in challenges, not only in illness, and as Helene alluded to earlier, the impact on the family and the impact on the individual that may extend longer than, than hospitalizations. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is now the community in this increase is impacting the schools, and I applaud your efforts for considering this, these proposals, because we've not been able to control the community spread, and we know that what happens in the community happens in the schools. And even though the rates of transmission are low in the school, lower in the schools, we still think that this is wise to think about this alternative, and I applaud you for thinking about it. We're in this together, and I think if we can get the rates in our community to participate fully in control of wearing a face covering, of physical distancing, of avoiding social gatherings, of washing your hands, and doing all the things that you've talked about so far, that we've been talking about for weeks and months, then I think we would be better off and hopefully have less impact on the schools. Well, thank, thank you for allowing us to be here with you, and I, and I know each of our team would be open to your questions.
Is that it? All right. Well, obviously, it's really disappointing that we find ourselves in this place after all the work that we've put into making in-person learning happen. I'll just start with one question. One thing we did in March 12th is we did provide childcare for working families. Will there be any childcare options during this interim period before we go back to in-person learning?
I, I think that that's something we, we can review. Given where we are with, with the case, the case rates and the massive quarantining, at this point, we don't have any plans to offer that childcare next week. I think that that's something that we can review in the conversations. And again, these things happen suddenly, as we started to really start to see the impacts of this quarantining, we felt the need to act quickly. So over the course of the next few weeks, I think that, that we can have conversations first to, to, to see if we can work through our school-age care program to set up care for the, for our essential workers, right, as similarly to, to as we did when we closed in March, and then potentially look at, to see how we can expand that. But again, I would just reiterate that the rising cases in our community and the, the requirements around quarantining and isolating, if kids have symptoms and then can't prove that they have something else besides COVID, right, you're talking about massive shutdowns as well, so I think that's a different change, and something that we'll have to look at and consider.
Okay. All right. And then, I'm just gonna go down alphabetically, I think. Richard?
Well, I want to thank both the county departments of health and Rob and your team, and I know that you've taken a lot of effort in making the recommendation. Having said that, this is a recommended action, does that mean that we have to vote on it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Good for the clarification. So, I am a little bit concerned in terms of the question that Tina asked around childcare, because that is gonna present a big problem, particularly around some of the essential workers that we do have out in the community that need access to some form of childcare, and we're... that need access to some form of childcare. And we're very much dependent on the K-5 opening and having a place for their kids to go. So, I'm hoping that you do come up with some answers to that. But unfortunately, you know, it is what it is, and we need to listen to our health departments and our teams. So, thanks for the information.
Kathy?
I'll echo Richard's. Thank you to Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield County Health. I just have a couple of quick questions. What will meal service look like? Will go back to delivering meals like we were before, a couple days a week? Can you just talk about that real quickly?
I think that we do have meal distribution already set up in the sense of how this is going to impact that. I'm not sure if Rob Price has that information. Again, this all came together pretty quickly. Rob, do you have information on that, or do we need to be able to get back to the board and community on that?
No. Food distribution, Kathy, will continue just like we are now. So, nothing will change there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, maybe you could just say what it is, just in case some people who are listening don't, aren't familiar with what it looks like.
Okay. So, right now, we have food distribution that occurs on Mondays. I believe it is from 10:30 to 1:30. The information can be found on our website. We have seven locations across the district that we set that up. Families can come, and it's free and no cost to the family. They can pick up a bag of food. Typically, there's 10 to 14 meals in those bags. And then, of course, with the students that are in school right now, of course, meals are free. That will, you know, once they go to remote learning, will just be dependent on the bag program.
Can I make a comment on the meal distribution? Just so you're aware, I think every person who has a child in the district gets a text on the meal distribution days. I do. So, just, I think the awareness is quite high, and the district has done a very good job making sure people know, and they remind them every time there's going to be distributions.
And I would just add to that, Tina, if families are having a difficult time getting to the sites, please let us know that. We will work with the community liaisons to make sure that we can get food to them. That's another program we have in place.
Are we gonna continue the iPrime or whatever it was that we were doing for technology? I'm hearing that our Chromebooks are sometimes performing up to par, but there's a lot of, like, microphone malfunctions and camera malfunctions. And so, as we know, that's such a key to keeping things going. So, are we gonna keep that going, Rob?
Yes, we will. And Andrew, if you're on the line, if you'd like to speak to that. Andrew's just recently shared some data with me in regards to the number of visits and home visits we've made in regards to the iTeam Prime, over 1,000 home visits to try to help and support. So, Andrew, do you want to add some more to that?
Yeah, no, just that we are looking to shift our resources from the schools to iTeam Prime and to make sure we're ensuring that the students have the devices they need.
Then, Rob, there's some schools that are coming back this week off quarantine. Do they come back and then go to remote, or are they gonna stay remote? What's the plan for some of the ones that are kind of like in between?
I would say that the plan is for them to return in the event that they're able to. Again, we've had to, we've had to put four schools on remote again today. We anticipate Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday having to do that additionally as these cases rise. So, you know, again, if you start to think exponentially how this is growing and you see the pattern, I would say that schools that are prepared to come back, they're able to come back, right? But stay tuned, right? Because we can get more information tomorrow, even though it's a holiday, we're getting this information. We're trying to track this down. Stay ahead of it the best we can.
And how does this impact sports?
I think that there's new regulations. As a safer at home, level orange community, there are implications on being able to have indoor sports. I believe that outdoor sports are still being okayed. We're gonna work through those on a case-by-case basis. I believe football season's almost over from the reports that we got today. And then, the indoor sports, from what I understand, most of those start in the beginning of January. So...
So, stay tuned.
I think that, you know, yes, stay tuned. As fast as I've seen this information change, we should all be staying tuned, not only to what's happening with us in the school district, but what's happening within our community, right? These cases are rising. It is, I know that both Broomfield County Health and Boulder County Public Health have been working very, very hard to get this message out around, we need to all work together to reverse the trend. I believe that that's the catchy kind of slogan that we'll steal from Broomfield County Health right now, in that this is, unless we work together, this trend won't break, until you get to a point where you're gonna inevitably, like, we're all gonna have to stay home again. I don't see how that goes any other way. So, yes, stay tuned to the extent that we know what's happening with sports. I think that parents and kids can expect to hear from their schools in regards to exactly what's happening.
This is kind of a tangential question, but do we know, maybe Boulder County Public Health knows, are we gonna require CU students to get tested before they go home? Because I know there's some concern about spreading when the students start leaving. Do you know what the status is on that?
I am unaware of that status. I don't know, Dr. Urbina?
I can answer that. I can answer that, yeah. We're working daily with the CU campus, and the current recommendation is that all students will be tested at least two to three days before they leave and before they come back. And part of that is, we don't want, if they, our rates are extremely higher in Boulder County, we don't want folks to take that home, nor do we, wherever they end up going, we also want them to be tested before they come back. So, those are the current recommendations. Plus, Boulder's done a great, the CU campus has done a very good job of testing and making available testing for all their students. So, this access should not be an issue at all.
And the testing sites are Boulder County, are Boulder County Fairgrounds, is that right? I mean, where can families go if they need to get tested?
Sure, sure. I would tell people to visit our website, bocco, bouldercounty.org, and you can look at all the testing sites. There's one that just opened up at the fairgrounds. There's also one at the Dazio Field. Those are easily accessible, and I know they're extremely busy.
Are we seeing a slowdown and turnaround of results?
Right now, it varies with the site. It's usually two to three days for those PCR tests, the nasal swab, but that's actually fairly good right now.
Thanks again for being such good partners with us. Really appreciate it.
Donna?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I do want to thank Rob for giving us the update on the food distribution. I know that I've heard from families that they really appreciate the gallon of milk each week and some of the other amenities that come in that food distribution. I know that some, sometimes it's just set right on the doorstep, so that's good to know. I had a question for Boulder County Health. It's probably more for them than for, for Rob. Is, as far as daycare centers and private schools, what are you seeing with them? Have there been shutdown quarantine recommendations? I'm hearing from community members and from emails that I get and phone calls, that many of those schools aren't having the issue. They're not having to shut down. Can you expound on that? Thank you.
Yeah. So, we have seen a couple of outbreaks in some of our private institutions, and they, some of them have opted to go remote. If not through the end of the year, some of them will go remote for a couple of weeks. I think the biggest difference is just size of student population. Some of our private schools are as small as 25 students, and so it's just a smaller group of students. Some of them are able to cohort maybe a little more tightly in smaller groups, depending on the age makeup and the style of school it is. But we are definitely still seeing cases. I think, again, it's just the difference of a large district versus a small independent school. We are seeing quite a few cases in our early childhood centers. I believe right now, we have at least 16 or 17 quarantined cohorts within centers, and a couple of our larger centers have had to shut down for a little while. So, we are seeing this spread just across the age range, impacting early childhood as well.
Thank you for that. I know that recently, my little grandson of nine months had an ear infection and ran a fever. So, immediately, yes, he had a COVID test. It was negative. Thank God for that. But I know that there's a lot of precautions going on, so I just wondered and wanted the question answered, because the community is asking daycare centers versus private schools versus, you know, the big public schools. Thank you.
Helene, could you comment on that for Broomfield and also talk about the testing that's available there in Broomfield as well?
Yeah, we are seeing similar trends in Broomfield as Heather shared for Boulder. We are working with several childcare centers very closely and have, you know, some that are in outbreak status or many that have one case popping up, one case popping up. So, the cohort, cohorting is a big component of being able to keep those classroom, other classrooms open. We work with them very closely on just their screening protocols and cleaning and all the different criteria, which it's, just like at the, at the school district level, staffing is at times becoming, for some centers, becoming one of the critical pieces of this due to quarantine and/or cases. We do have our testing site that is on Tuesday afternoons. That's at our Health and Human Services building. That's for Broomfield residents and anyone that works or, you know, works in Broomfield or lives in Broomfield. And so, that has been very busy, as Dr. Urbina noted, about the other, other locations. Many locations, I believe, are actually filling up before their time of their window. So, there is quite a demand for testing throughout the whole metro region.
Okay. Kitty?
Yes, I have questions for the public health people. And before I ask, I want to also thank everybody for all the hard work you've done. Rob and your team, and Stephanie and her team, and both of the public health agencies have just done super work. So, thank you. My question is about emails we get and letters you see in the paper from people who have other sources of information about COVID that they think is better than the information we're getting from you all. And, I mean, I see you there smiling, Dr. Urbina, but what do you say, how do you respond to that?
So, both of our, thank you for the question, Kitty. Both of our communication folks are working full-time in Boulder and in Broomfield to get a different message out there. And I think that we're doing lots of press releases. We're working with our partners, city, in both the cities as well as the county governments. We're also spending a lot of time pushing out media and trying to correct some of that misguided information. And so, we're, and my slogan, you can quote me on this one, Rob, is that I like to say, spread the information, not the infection. So, I think that we want to give people accurate information so they can do some prevention to make our community safer. And I think if we do that, you know, it's simple and it's cheap, we can get kids back to school as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Kitty, also, just from the school district's perspective, I think that, you know, people, it's a testament to our teachers and our schools how bad that parents want their kids in them, right? Like, I take that as a compliment when people are upset that we can't do that. And I don't, and I don't think that we can expect folks in our community to understand the complexities and pressures, you know, the eight, nine months of pressure we've been under to try to make this work. And so, you know, as folks react and send emails, oftentimes, you know, people angry, people upset, like, we understand that. Like, I get that. Trust me. I'm incredibly upset making this announcement to you all and to this community this evening. The fact that we don't have, we aren't able to have our kids in our buildings in a way that we feel like is safe and we can staff is certainly upsetting. But, you know, it's just, I think there's levels of complexities that folks aren't, I can't expect them to understand. I can't expect them what it takes when you have 57 schools and you get 20 cases, and your entire district staff has been farmed out to schools to cover for classes where folks have had to be quarantined, and folks are getting sick, and folks are dealing with sick loved ones. You know, I don't think people will ever feel or understand that, and I don't expect them to. But please know and understand that my, our team, we, this was an incredibly difficult day to come to this conclusion that we've had to make this decision. But we have a responsibility to do the right thing at the right time. And so, that's why we're bringing this recommendation this evening.
Okay. Lisa?
I was just gonna say that I think, it's very touching to hear you share that, Rob, and I'll just echo, and I'm sure Heather is thinking the same thing. It's really hard for me too and for everyone on my team, and these are not easy decisions. We really, really are, all of us are putting our heads together, what else can be done to avoid a stay-at-home. We all miss the things that we all used to do that were, you know, easy and normal. And we also recognize that the hospitalizations are of concern. And we know a lot of people have mild symptoms, but there is this unknown of why certain people develop weird, weird complexities or weird lingering problems or some people that are hospitalized. And so, it is such a hard decision, and we feel it too here at the health departments. It's not something we hope for, and we're struggling and sad about it as well.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thanks. For public health, no questions, but thanks again for the incredible, ongoing hard work. Rob, for the recommendations, you know, as an elementary school parent and as a working parent, it's tough to hear. But looking at the trends and at the numbers, I really don't think there's any other choice that we can make as a district, and I think this is the right thing to do. I do hope folks who are listening, especially those who are, who are struggling with the news, are thoughtful about choices around gatherings and celebrations in the next month, so we can get back to that early January date. I know that I will be counting the days from my house, and I'm sure I will not be the only parent of small children really looking forward to January and hoping to start again then.
Okay. Stacy?
Yeah, I also extend my thanks to everyone and all their hard work. And I ditto what Lisa just said. And, you know, it's clear how agonizing this decision was for all of you. And so, I really appreciate that. I do have just a couple quick questions. Would teachers still be allowed in their buildings to teach their class remotely like they were before we went back?
Yes, we believe we're gonna be able to make that accommodation for those teachers that want to and continue to be able to do that. Yes, so that's the plan at this point.
Okay, thanks. Also, I know the priority is to get those with intensive needs back into the buildings, but will there maybe be some conversation about having some sort of study hall environment or something for kids who really need just something extra going forward, if it's safe to do so?
I think we can, we can, we can think about that in regards to, you know, some type of an environment for kids in the, in the event that they, that they need that. To the extent that we can do that soon, will just depend on case rates, right? Like, so if the cases continue to climb and things get more and more spread without our community and community transmission begins to go, I think that we'll just have to really confer with, with our health partners and with our team to the extent of when is it appropriate to be able to do that. But we'll continue to watch the numbers. I think that when you make a decision like this, we're trying to do a few things. Number one, give everybody, give our teachers, give our parents some time, right? We're giving everybody a week before we're letting them know that we're closing. Between now and then, we'll continue to operate on a case-by-case basis. And we're trying to give them just some space to be able to predict what's going to happen between Thanksgiving and the winter break. But we'll continue to look at that, Stacy. And I'll continue to be tuned in and do everything that we can as a school district to support families in ways that are safe and we can sustain.
And then, just one last quick thing. And I asked this when we first went to remote months ago, about those classes that can't necessarily be taught adequately remotely, such as, I don't know, something with a 3D printer, or some PE classes, or the house, the house project in Broomfield, that's the math class. Will there be some concessions for those classes going forward? Is that just a school by school, class by class, teacher by teacher decision? How are those things going? Now that we know that we'll be remote through the end of this semester, it kind of changes the question a little bit, whereas before it was unknown.
Well, I do think we're gonna have to have some time to answer that, you know, you know, like, we've, we worked through this, you know, today, and this is the first that many of our teachers and other staff are hearing this, right? And so, their heads are probably spinning. So, we'll just need some time to figure that out. I think... I think that by giving everybody a week, Monday's a launch day, a planning day, in working, as we've talked through this today with BVA and others, we feel like that, you know, we're going to give teachers some space to plan and figure those things out. But those questions are what makes this incredibly difficult, right? Because we know and understand the importance of in-person learning, we know and understand that there are experiences that are incredibly difficult to replicate, so those are things that we'll continue to think about, but to answer, I mean, right now, those are happening on a, just a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, and I don't have any more questions, but again, I, I support this decision. I don't see that there was any other decision to be made at this point, and, and I echo Lisa's plea to have people look at, and myself included, we all need to look at our own behavior so that we can fix this and change the trend. It's frustrating, but we can all make a difference doing that, so thanks again.
Okay, and I have a couple of clarifying questions as well. One is that we sometimes hear about how school employees have been deemed essential, and I think that there's some confusion in the community as to what that means. I understand that it's not a mandate that schools be open or that people show up to work, but that we get some flexibility in meetings. So for instance, tonight, we're obviously, several unrelated households meeting in an indoor room with masks, and that's what an essential gives you, but it does not give us a way out of, for instance, complying with the new quarantine guidelines that were issued by a CD-PHE. So could someone speak a little bit to that?
I can, and then if anybody else wants to chime in, I think that, you know, recently, and I think the term was critical, right? That schools were critical, deemed like critical businesses, I think is, or critical business or critical function.
Yeah, critical businesses.
So, and to the extent that, that there is the flexibility within some school districts, within some school communities to continue to run even as cases rise and jump, but to your point, nobody is immune from the CD-PHE quarantining guidelines, right? And I think as you see as school districts across the Denver metro, big, large school districts with lots of sites, with lots of employees, with lots of kids, right? It doesn't take many cases, what we've seen, to begin to start to quarantine enough people, right? Where then you, you don't have enough staff to run because we don't have the reserves. And I think that I've shared with this community, with this board before, that our substitute pool has been cut in half during this pandemic, so we don't have substitutes to come and cover staff, we've emptied out the central offices. The issues that we're seeing is when you empty out the central offices and then there's a school that's quarantined, your backups get quarantined too, right? So, so every quarantine, and, and, you know, as we've, half of our schools right now have been impacted by quarantine one way or the other, more than half, that your pool, your reserve pool just shrinks and shrinks and shrinks. And so I think, again, those aren't things that I expect folks to fully understand. I just share that to say that even though we were deemed critical, it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the needs to do these, to follow the quarantine and guidelines by CD-PHE, which are restrictive for a reason, right? And inevitably, they're restricting us to a place where we don't feel that it is, you know, it's not even feasible to begin to operate and continue to operate as a school district, so, in an in-person manner.
Thank you. Another comment I just wanted to make was how difficult this also is for teachers. Sometimes we get emails that suggest that this is kind of like a break for teachers to do remote learning. I would think from my conversations with the several friends that I have that are teachers, that remote learning is extraordinarily challenging in terms of the time it takes, in terms of the frustration with some of the difficulties we all have with technologies. If you remember the start of this very board meeting, we had about four different things go wrong in five minutes. It's not uncommon, so I, I just want to applaud the teachers who are sticking with us and facing the challenges that we bring, both with in-person, hybrid, hydroflex, whatever that one is, and an all-remote situation. People who go into teaching really care about kids, and they care about their learning. And so I would imagine the frustration is, is so great when we know that we may not be doing everything we can for those kids in this remote environment. And I just want to call that out, that this is going to be really hard for our teachers as well as we navigate yet another part of this, of a new situation. And then another thing that I think we as a board should talk about is how we're going to advocate to our local government and our federal government policies and stances that better support the opening of schools and priorities, prioritizing our students over other entities in the state. The reality is, next week, my child will not go to school, but I can go to a bar with a lot of people and have a drink. I'm not sure that's the way it's supposed to work. So I think we all need to think about what that looks like and how we can start thinking about putting our students first in this pandemic. I think the cost of the lost learning and the mental health issues are going to be significant over time, and we're extending that period. So that's just another thing I wanted to share where my head has been. And the last thing, as I did talk to, speak, or touch on mental health, and I am wondering if there's a way that we can distribute resources back to our parents or in contacts because we have now been in this really uncertain situation since March. I think people are beginning to fray, I think we are going to see negative behaviors and feelings and uncertainty affecting our families, and I'm hoping that there's a way we can proactively provide contacts. I don't think we have a budget to provide all the counseling that people probably could use, but if there's anything we can do to connect them with the resources in the community. Especially holidays are notoriously a difficult time, especially as many of us face that we may not be seeing our family, so.
A couple of things, yes, I think that we can, can work to provide those resources, and I just want to, Tina, echo the comments in regards to our teachers and our employees. And I'm a career educator. This is my 22nd year in education, most of those spent in schools. I've worked in very successful school districts, Boulder Valley included, and when I tell you that we have the very best teachers I've ever worked with, I've never seen that more evident than what I've seen over the course of the past four months. I've watched, I've watched teachers just step up and rise to the challenge this year and at the end of last year to meet the needs of our kids. I've seen so many of our employees go above and beyond, many of them doing that while dealing with personal issues related to COVID, many of them doing that while genuinely scared for their own safety and the safety of their loved ones. And the efforts of our teachers, of our employees during this pandemic has been nothing short of heroic. I just need for everybody to know and understand that, and that people are the strength of our district. And as we think about making these decisions that are very, very hard for us to make, right? We also have to understand that not only do we have 30,000 kids that we have to take care of, we have 5,000 employees that rely on us to make sure that we're creating environments that are safe to work in, where they're not, they're not, we're not taking undue risks. And I will tell you that that certainly weighs into, into these decisions. I appreciate you bringing that up for our teachers that are listening and, and watching this, or maybe will, will hear about this, just thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. Your, you, our employees are just the heart of this district, and I just really appreciate you sharing that.
Kathy?
I just wanted to follow up on what you just said, Tina, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Urbina, but I heard rumblings that the directors of county health departments are trying to get together to ask for a more coordinated approach because I think this isolated county-by-county approach may not be ultimately the best way to bring this virus back under control, so I'm wondering, maybe you can't talk about that, but it sure seems like we need to have a little more coordinated approach than just county by county.
Sure, I can talk about that. There's a group of metro Denver public health directors that meet weekly that are talking about strategies that they can collectively, and that's why you see some of the data that both Helene and Heather shared, is we're trying to present the Denver metro area as one community, and so we share with you the data that's happening. The same thing is true about strategies, because we know Adams County affects Broomfield, Broomfield affects Boulder, Boulder affects Broomfield, and Jefferson affects all of us. And, and so, so I think that we're, we're trying to have consistent policies, fat mask wearing, physical distancing, the, the schools and some of the strategies, so, because we know people move from county to county, and so the answer is yes. Are we totally effective? Not always, because each county has their own separate board of health, but we try to be as consistent as we possibly can in the light of, of having, you know, a state government that is so variable, you know, rural Colorado's so different than the Denver metro area. So we are trying to do that. Rest assured that we're doing our best to make that happen.
Okay, anything else? Richard?
Yeah, Tina, I want to echo what you just said, especially around mental health. One of the things that we're finding is that the incidence of domestic violence has increased. It's going off the roof, and I believe that somehow we need to coordinate more closely with the mental health folks to help alleviate that because it is, it is becoming very, very problematic, and, and something's got to be done because I believe that COVID has now reached this apex in terms of all the other things happening that is wrong with, with families and, and the way they're behaving and all of that, but, but I really appreciate your mentioning the mental health aspect of it because it's critical.
Donna?
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Richard and Tina for bringing this up, and Rob as well, and just our Boulder County health officials for realizing that, I heard today on a news broadcast that safer to tell issues are way down. That's an indication that, that people aren't calling in with the violence episodes, or there's a local pastor that I just heard his sermon last week, and it brings chills to me when I try to reiterate it, but in the last nine months, he's had seven suicide services. And I, I know that, that we're reaching a point in our, not only with our schools, but, but with our community, that we have to coordinate with our own school psychologists, social workers, and health officials to, to try to offer whatever services we can. So thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
I was just going to share that, and Broomfield Public Health, we are actually trying to pull some of the data that's just looking for any, any increases in any awareness of trends that we can see in suicide rates, and so we actually are, have a group working on that, and we work really closely with mental health partners and community reach and, and the schools, and so I hope that we can continue that because it is a high priority and it is a recognized need in numerous work settings and school settings and home settings in terms of the mental health impact that COVID's taking, and there was already issues going on in suicides of concern even before COVID. Hopefully, we can all kind of continue to work more on that in the future.
Thank you, Helene. All right, any other last comments? Okay, so, well, Rob, thank you for all of the staff's work. Oh, Dr. Urbina? Oh, you're muted.
I'm because I have to leave. Thank you all.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. So thanks again for all the work you all put into this decision. I think we all knew it might be coming, it's not hard to guess with the horrible trend lines in our community, but again, it's going to be a hard time, and I'm sorry that our kids won't be in-person learning, it's the best place for them to be, and we know it, and hopefully we get them back there as soon as we can.